Good evening, it's 5:01 and with all board members present, we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of silence and the presenting of our colors by the Central High School National Junior ROTC, after which time, the pledge will be led by Ms. Horn.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to say a special thank you to Central High School students and Chief Warrant Officer David Johnson for the ceremony tonight. As you may know, our Board of Education work session scheduled for Monday, January the eighth, was canceled due to the weather and icy road conditions, so that means we will be holding all discussion and consideration of agenda items at the same time tonight. We want all those in attendance to know that the format of this regular session may look a little different. With that being said, Happy New Year to all of our Knox County families, our teachers and students reported back to school yesterday, and we look forward to a great semester. Also, thank you to everyone who attended the first strategic plan community meeting last night at West Valley Middle School. We look forward to hearing all of the public input from all nine meetings as we work on our new district plan. Recognizing our elected officials, I see Commissioner Dave Wright back there tonight. Thank you Commissioner Wright for being here. So, we'll move to changes to the agenda. Just a reminder, board members, that the agenda wording for item 6(c)(3) was updated yesterday at the recommendation of the Law Department to more closely reflect the ESMT documentation. Also, some additional maps were attached to item 9(c), rezoning this afternoon. I would also request, without objection, that we had the superintendent's report and the audit report following our special recognition, and then Board forum tonight, following public forum for tonight's lineup. Are there any other comments or changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Okay, Ms. Rontree has moved to approve, Ms. Horn is seconding it. All in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Okay, special recognitions. So, I am very excited to share detail about a truly amazing young lady with you tonight. Katie Davis was crowned Miss Tennessee on June 24, 2017, and as such, she serves as Governor Haslam's official spokesperson for character education, which gives her the opportunity to speak to over 50,000 schoolchildren. She also serves as Tennessee's goodwill ambassador for the Five Children's Miracle Network Hospitals, and holds positions as a national spokesperson for Facing Addiction, Official Friends of Monroe Carroll Jr. Children's Hospital at Vanderbilt, and as volunteer Tennessee's honorary board chair. Katie is a magna cum laude graduate of the University of Tennessee at Knoxville, and holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology with a minor in business administration. She has been named Accomplished Alumni 2017 by the university, and during her senior year, Katie was selected as one of the 50 seniors to the Mortar Board Senior Honor Society, and was also a member of both the Phi Chi Honor Society and the Sigma Alpha Phi Honor Society. For the past four years, Katie has been dedicated to promoting awareness and fundraising for substance abuse prevention and treatment across our state. For her efforts, she was named a National Ambassador for Facing Addiction Incorporated, and had the opportunity to attend their United National Convention in Washington DC. Katie was recruited by drogerehab.com to serve as their Real Talk Ambassador for Tennessee high school students to share her personal story of a family plagued by addiction, and discuss options for students who need help. She also worked with Tennessee Overdose Prevention as their keynote speaker and senior for their International Overdose Awareness Day, as well as the Addicts Family Event. I could share much more detail about Katie's work and her passions, but one of the things I'm proud of stuff for Katie is that I got to be her first grade teacher at Powell Elementary School, and she was exceptional back then as she is today. She is a graduate of Cards High School. I know that she is humbled and honored to have this unique opportunity to be a role modeling mentor to thousands of students across Tennessee, and we are very proud that she is a graduate of Knox County Schools. So, please join me as we recognize Miss Tennessee and one of the finalists in the Miss America Pageant 2017, Katie Davis. Katie, do you want to say just a word about the opportunities that you can provide for Knox County Schools?
Absolutely. Well, thank you guys so, so much for the special recognition, and I love being back home in Knox County. Apologies for my voice sounding like this, I think half the state has had the crud. But, I am honored to be here, and yes, I get to speak to 50,000 schoolchildren, and that is by far my favorite part of my job, and I visit with Lee University and different newsrooms and talk about addiction, but being in the school system, seeing this bright spirit in children that are being impacted by addiction every day, things that have them down, being able to tell them that Miss Tennessee hasn't had the perfect life, you know, I have a crown on my head, but it wasn't a fairy tale. And so, being able to have that, been there, done that mentality empowers them, and they can see that they can do it too, and that they can use the four Cs that I teach them. I didn't cause it, I can't cure it, but I can celebrate myself and make good choices. And those choices go throughout, whether it's their academics, the way they treat their other students, the way they respect their teachers, I mean, it's absolutely an honor, and I would love to visit every Knox County school, I know we have about 90, right? Yeah, so, I would love to be there and be able to share my, my testimony, my, my story, and tell them why I love Knox County and my education, and I'm proud to be, proud to be here, and thank you guys so, so much.
Well, thank you. We're gonna do a photo op if you want to come up on stage, and Ms. Hill, she's from your district, would you like to join me? Okay, as the meeting rolls along, next will be our superintendent's report with Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a few updates since our last meeting. During the December 6, 2017 Board of Education Regular Session Meeting, the board directed me to appoint a committee composed of at least one board member to enter into the discussion with the University of Tennessee regarding Leadership Academy proposal, and then bring it back before the board for their consideration. I have appointed the following individuals to represent the school board in this process: Dr. Rodney Russell, I've asked Dr. Russell to chair the committee, Ms. Susan Horn, fifth district board member, Ms. Jennifer Owen, second district board member, Ms. Cheryl Hickman, who is our Executive Director of Secondary Schools, and then Dr. Kelly Drummond, who is our Executive Director of Human Resources. This committee will have its first meeting at the AJ Building this Friday at 9:30 a.m. in the small conference room behind the boardroom. We held our first strategic plan, as, as, as Madam Chair referenced, the strategic plan community meeting last night at West Valley Middle School, wanted to report that we had approximately 40 people in attendance, including staff, 25 of those were parents or community members. I want to thank board member Susan Horn for her participation in the program. We received some great feedback from those in attendance, and look forward to our next meeting, which will be held at West High School Thursday, tomorrow, January 11, at 6:00 p.m., so encourage folks to come out and tell us what you think about our school district, and help us formulate our next strategic plan. Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence has named South Doyle High School a Lighthouse School of Distinction. Schools are identified and selected for this award based on performance in all nine major categories of the, of the blueprint for excellent assessment, that includes student focus and support, school organization and culture, challenging standards in curriculum, active teaching and learning, technology integration, professional community, leadership and educational vitality, school, family, and community partnerships, and indicators of success. So, congratulations to South Doyle High School. The Tennessee Principals Association has recognized Julie Thompson, our very own Executive Director of Elementary Education, as Supervisor of the Year, so we want to thank Julie for all the work that she does to support our principals each day, and Julie, I see you back there, would you mind just standing up for us so we can recognize you? Thank you, and thank you Julie, and congratulations, and I just have to say, just, we're so fortunate for so many great folks that, in Knox County Schools, in, in all the categories of our employees, so it's just, we have just an extremely talented group, and folks are being recognized all the time for the work that they do. I have appointed Assistant Principals to the two new middle schools. Melissa Glover will serve at Harden Valley Middle, and Scott Reed will serve at Gibbs Middle School. Yesterday, we celebrated our school resource officers across the district in the first ever Knox County Schools Resource Officer Appreciation Day. So, the next time you're in one, in one of the schools and see an officer, be sure to thank them for the work they do to keep our students and staff safe each day, so thank you to all of our school resource officers for the work that you do, and also for being in our meetings as well, so thank you, thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the superintendent on his report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Thomas, do you have an idea of a timeline? I know the committee's gonna start meeting this Friday, and I believe the university starts its selections in the next month or so, do we have an idea how long we might in this process?
Yes, I, what, what my, what my hope is, what I'll ask the committee to do is, is to try to, once they get started on Friday, to, and I know we just have a few weeks left in the month of January, but to try to conclude this work in the month of January, so that, depending on what the board decides to do, we'd still have an opportunity for, if the board approves a proposal, for the individuals to, to apply for that and be selected, and...
So, you're hoping we have something on our agenda in February?
February.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Okay, Mr. Spencer, the audit report.
Attached to the agenda for the Monday meeting were a number of files that contain financial statements for the internal school funds for each of our schools, as well as combinations of those funds. Those financial statements were prepared by Mr. Garrett Raden, who is our supervisor of internal school funds, and he'll be here tonight answering questions you might have about those financial statements. We also have a representative of the firm that's currently conducting the examination of those funds, Mr. Ted Hoets, which, who, if, if necessary, can give you an update on where the audit stands. So, the question becomes, what are internal school funds, and those are the kinds of transactions that you see on your agenda every month. These are funds that are defined within the Tennessee State Code. They are, you as a board authorize schools to collect and use these funds at the school level. The funds are the property of the schools, and those funds are used and accounted for by each principal of the school, who also has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that those funds are used properly, as well as the safekeeping of those funds. The school funds are subject to an annual audit, and you as a board pay for that audit. If you look at the, the budget for the current year, the audit fee is about $107,000, which you pay for, and you select the auditors. For whatever reason, in the past, this report has not been put, has not been given to you directly, but goes, been through the audit committee for the county, and I quite, I don't understand that. But anyway, tonight, tonight, the, the financial statements are being presented to you as the board. We will also, by the end of this month, wrap up the audit and all the audit findings, and we'll come back to the board with those findings, with corrective action plans for whatever findings are included in that report. You may ask, what are findings? Excuse me. The Comptroller, the State Treasury establishes the policies and procedures for these funds in what's called an Internal, Internal School Uniform Accounting Policy Manual, and findings are any deviations from those policies that are established in that manual. There are also any deviations from the board policies that, if you recall, back in March of last year, we went through all of those policies, the fiscal policies section, and we attempted to consolidate all of those that had to do with internal school funds in one board policy, which came out to be Policy D241, for your reference. One new law that you should be aware of, it was part of the 2017 legislation that was passed, is Public Chapter 383, which requires a corrective action plan for any audit finding. And what we have done, and Mr. Raden is heading this up, we have contacted all principals within Knox County and said, you as a principal have to develop a corrective action plan for any of these audit findings. And so, we're in the process of doing that, we've got 90-something corrective action plans that we're looking at in detail, and we'll be consolidating for you, as well as showing you in detail what a principal has, in effect, pledged to do to correct the findings for his or her school. As I stated, those will be, our deadline for that will be the end of this month, and then we'll get, get those to you. At this time, I'd like Mr. Raden to come forward, and if you have any questions whatsoever about those financial statements that were attached to Monday's agenda, he'll be happy to answer them for you. One of the things that we've done this year is Mr. Raden is actually preparing those financial statements, rather than relying on the audit firm to do it, and we hope that in the future, when you as a board decide to select new auditors, that we see some cost savings in doing that, because we have, in effect, we've, we've refined that process, and I'm, as a person who's worked in business, I'm embarrassed that this is six months after the end of the year, that you're just getting these financial statements, you should be seeing these financial statements long before now, and here's, here's the, here's one of the issues. These findings will reflect on the fiscal year 2017. Well, we're six months into 2018, so if there were findings in 2017, those have probably been repeated for six months, so there're gonna be 2018 findings as well, and that's just not the way to do business. So, Mr. Raden will address your questions.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Yes, Ms. Fugit. So, will you have to go back and restate last year's audit based on the findings, any corrective actions that have to be taken?
No, the, first of all...
That, were they, they weren't that material?
No, they're, for the most part, they're immaterial.
Okay.
The second part is, if you read the audit report from the auditors, it's an adverse opinion to begin with, because these statements are not presented on a GAAP basis, they're presented on the basis of the, of the policies and procedures that the Comptroller, the, the State Treasury establishes, so they're not GAAP financial statements, so no, there won't be every statement.
So, can he or you, who do I ask, like, what were the substantial issues?
The issues were the ones that were there last year, the year before, for the most part, which are things like, well, one of them that will not be applicable going forward was BEP money that was sent to the schools for teachers was not spent by the end of the year. Well, now that the state has changed, that's where it goes directly to teachers, that will no longer be an audit finding. There may be some minor violations of, there, one of the big ones that happens, and it's basically at every school, is the State Comptroller calls for segregation of duties within an office. You've been in the schools, you know a principal sitting there with one secretary bookkeeper, it's impossible to segregate duties. Another one has to do with depositing of receipts, have to be deposited within so many business days, well, we get receipts in all year long, and there's nobody there in the summertime at some of the schools who carries out that function, so they may sit in the drawer for a while, and then get deposited. So, you'll see findings like that, that every year, those findings are repeated.
Thank you, that's kind of what I wanted, because when you hear findings, people can think, oh my gosh, what, but those are rather to be expected.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, in my own opinion, most of them are form over substance findings, but Mr. Raden will be happy to answer any questions you have on the financial statements.
Mr. Raden.
Madam Chair, thank you Gary, thank you board members, I'll take your questions if you have them.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the board, from Mr. Raden at this time, Ms. Hill?
Hello.
Hey.
I, I see that this is a school activity fund audit report, can, can you tell us how some of our CTE issues fit into this? Is there, is there accountability within, at the school level, for any of that money?
So, just to clarify, the CTE issues, are you meaning more of the, can you specify which issues at CTE related?
Following the money.
Follow, yes, so that, if, if the board allocations go to the school, they become school internal service funds, so if, if no allocation money goes to a school, then they are school activity funds, so just to clarify the terminology for yourselves, school activity funds, no allocation money, school internal service funds, allocation money. So, so in this case, we actually have internal service funds, which means that allocation money has went to the school, and that would be tracked, and is tracked, rather well, for, not to toot our own horn, but yes, we, we do a very good job of tracking that in and out. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Fugit.
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, for clarification for people watching...
Yeah, absolutely.
School activity funds includes what kinds of monies?
Great.
Because I think, you know, we may all sit here and understand that, but people watching, what does that mean?
Yes, ma'am, great, great question, and school activity fund money is any funds that you as a parent pay to the school, so driver's ed, money, your classroom fees that you're not, that you would pay, and then field trip money, fundraiser money, so coupon book revenue goes into the books, if it becomes school internal service funds, then that would include allocations.
So, as a follow-up, in high schools, where we have so many sports clubs and cheerleading and dance team funds, I recall being treasurer of my son's soccer team at the high school, and it, and I had to go through the bookkeeper at the high school, so is that classified as a student activity?
Yes, ma'am, so that would be athletics, so like soccer, football, baseball, all of the T double S double A type sports, it would be athletics. Yes, ma'am.
So, I just think that's important for people to understand, too, that money that they pay for their children's sports activities go through the school, and that is audited by the school system.
Yes, ma'am, it is, every year, and it's required by state law, like Gary mentioned, did a well job explaining that, and yeah, there's also school support organizations that would be there, like booster clubs, PTAs, foundations, all those have their own separate type standards, but they fall into that same bucket.
Thank you, and I know it seems like I'm asking stuff that we know, but this is, people watch this, and, and people wonder what happens to that money, is it accounted for?
Yes, ma'am, no, great questions.
Okay, Ms. Horn.
Thank you. So, any money that would show up, for instance, under a math department, that would be, those would be the school fees that parents would send money in for a particular department also, would any of that money have come from the district, or it all comes from parents?
We have separate accounting features, so account numbers, if you will, just like what Munis would have, which would be the counties' software that they would use for your budget, the larger budget, 700 million, whatever that is, same concept there, is in, in, in the internal school funds as well, so math class would have their own account, social studies, their own account, the allocation would be separate, separated, because it's a different type of tracking. There is a constant in there in the coding, just that, that I've created since I've took over roughly three years ago, to make that easier to, to see, you know, like 001 is math, and it could have a class account, and it could have an allocation, that way, if you're a teacher, it's not complicated to learn your account numbers, or to remember them, it's rather easy at this point. Is that...
Yeah, I believe that answers the question. So, none of this money would have come from the district?
Not, not specifically. There would be district allocations, but they would be in separate accounts, so they're not miss, you know, co-mingled in the same account. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Norman.
Thank you. Could you talk a little bit about gate receipts at ballgames and accounting processes for, for that, those types of activities? That be any kind of sport, gate receipt?
Absolutely. E-school has their own way of implementing the procedure, but overall, they're gonna have, you know, great segregation of duties, we have a form, I believe the form number, I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's on our forms website for internal use, but they would use that form, and it basically documents the ticket sales beginning and ending, and then it has a way to do the math at the end, and, and the gate seller would take the tickets, to take the cash, is that what kind of, you're wanting the procedural aspect of that, is that on my page?
Yeah, is it a standard pro, is it a standard process?
Absolutely, yes, sir, yes, sir, that's exactly how they're trained, the, the secretaries, so the bookkeeper is trained how to do that, and then, since taking over, three, roughly three years ago, we do a monitoring of that throughout the year to see how they're doing, if they're needing help, you know, my assistant and I, we answer questions, we go out and do a hands-on approach to actually see it. Haven't attended a football game outside of my district before to see it, but it's, overall, it's, it's, it is the same exact process, everyone just has different ways to implement it, you know, is it the AD, is it the, the assistant principal, you know, that kind of thing, so the people change.
But it is a sta, I mean, if you're going into a game, you get a ticket, and the ticket is the primary way of accounting, I mean, it's the first layer of accounting, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and that's documented in the internal school manual that Gary, Mr. Spencer had mentioned.
Right.
So, it's, we fol, yes, sir, that we follow that to the T.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have another question, it looks like athletics is just one line item... It looks like athletics is just one line item.
Absolutely.
Is, is that within the school? Are there, are they separate line items at the school level?
Yes, ma'am. Great, rather great question. The internal school manual that we referenced, it actually allows for districts to either A, report them individualized, so baseball, football, basketball, individualized, or just summarize it by athletics. And since, at least my inception, when I used to be the auditor on this audit, it's always been grouped as athletics. So it's been summarized as a whole, but we do have the individual accounts at the school. And then what I do, when I write the financials this year, we, we just rolled it all up to one, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is that...
Okay. I don't see any other questions, and thank...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Owen.
I just wanted to say, I think it would be really helpful to the board in the future if, if everyone could see exactly how that's broken down by classroom.
By...
So, for example, if I had a music class, I might have fundraiser money in my account, and I might have a fee in my account, and I might have an allocation in my account so that, so that we can see how those work together.
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of just the summary.
Absolutely.
I think that would be worthwhile for us.
And worth noting, just FYI, so I, I like to address this, we're actually in the process of doing that at, now. So the fundraiser line that you've seen in the general fund on the balance sheet, so if you were to look at a balance sheet for any of the schools, it would say fundraising is one of the line items. That's fundraising for, you know, just the general school. So coupon books, that's where your coupon books money go. If you do a cookie dough fundraiser, that's what I'm training the, the schools currently, actually, to use that functionality, like you're saying, Ms. Owen, to, to put all the fundraisers there, and then transfer out to baseball, the profit, right? That way, it's more, it's a little cleaner, like you're asking. Yes, ma'am. So we'll work on that.
Ms. Horn.
I apologize. I have one more question. Is, can you talk about the difference between, for instance, a PTO and an education foundation? I, because, does an education foundation that directly benefits a school, do they fill out the same type of paperwork that a PTO would?
It's all based on if they're a school support organization. So a school support organization, the direct definition, I don't have off the top of my head, but in summary, it's any, any organization that uses the school's mascot, logo, name, address, any, any of that for raising of funds, right? So in this case, an education foundation may or may not be a school support organization based on that particular guidance. And all of those are approved by the director of schools designate, which is myself. And it's on our website for a list of those. It's...
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think that's all the questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Raiden. Gary?
Just, just one quick comment. The thing to keep in mind, and I know people confuse these, but activity funds are a subset of the internal school funds. Internal school funds is much broader than just activity funds. So for example, at the district level, we allocate money out to the schools. Like, for example, the BEP money went out to the schools, used to go out to the schools. Fee waiver money goes to the schools, and that gets captured in a separate account. That's not an activity fund, but it's there for the principal use for the general operations of the school. And so in that case, the question about the detail, what you're seeing in these financial statements is a summarization of a lot of detail. And if you want to see more detail, we'd be happy to provide it. Whatever you want to see, we, we will do, we will, we will provide.
Ms. Fugit? Thank you. Just one other quick, what, what this says to me is that bookkeepers in our schools have a lot of responsibility. How are we training them?
Mr. Garrett, Ms., Mr. Garrett, Mr. Raiden, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Raiden conducts training over a two-week period at the end of the summer break and just before school starts. One of the things that was suggested today in discussion of this was to get the principals who want to come to that training there because it's the principal's fiduciary responsibility for these funds. And we do have a lot of turnover in bookkeepers, as you can imagine. They're among the lowest paid people in the district. And so I think there's, this past year, out of ninety-three locations, we lost eight, I think eighteen bookkeepers.
Yeah.
And that's a big blow. And then you have turnover in principals who might come in and have a new bookkeeper. And we had a lot of, one of the findings you're going to see is because of a bookkeeper was out on extended medical leave at one of the high schools, and Mr. Raiden filled in for her and signed off on journal entries.
That technically is a finding.
But if he hadn't been there, the work wouldn't have gotten done because you just can't go out and, they're not standing on corners wanting to be bookkeepers in schools.
Okay, so that, that was my question, is who's their backup in the building? Do we, do we train an assistant principal or a principal or somebody?
Again, if you've got one bookkeeper secretary, there is no backup.
No.
And then, then you have no segregation of duties, then you have a finding, and...
I get it. I get it. Lived it my whole life. Get it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
If you need anything else, just let us know.
Okay. We're going to move into the consent agenda, and since we didn't have a meeting Monday night, we may need to discuss items on the consent. There are seventeen items, so rather than go down through there number by number, are there any of these items that the board wishes to discuss at this time?
It's, it's this first one.
The entire consent agenda?
Number six is all of this. Until we get down to seven, we're first.
Well, I, okay.
Would you like for me to move approval of the consent agenda and then people...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that would be, then we can have the discussion. Yes, thank you.
And then if people want to pull off, they can.
Thank you, yes, Ms. Fugit. Ms. Fugit moved to approve, and Ms. Roundtree seconded, so we can have all in favor. So, okay, now we can have discussion on these items if there's any that you... Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if on item six, if this reporting will be time-consuming. We're already asking for so many...
Okay, Ms. Massey.
So much paperwork. I'm concerned about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's actually an electronic system that when we look at their, the record-keeping, so we're hoping that it actually is a time reduction so that we can analyze data more readily, et cetera. And in addition to the data-keeping, they also will be doing some training and working with teachers and staff and train, doing some additional training for us. So it's just some additional supports to the resources that we have within the system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other items you wish to discuss? Ms. Coteley?
So, item six, consent agenda. We have a motion for Ms. Fugit and a second for Ms. Roundtree.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Item seven A, approve subrecipient information and commitment form for a grant proposal to the University of Tennessee to evaluate the feasibility and effectiveness in computerized mathematic training.
Jimadee, mine just left me. Okay, Ms. Dethridge?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry. I have, I would like to hear a little bit more about this one also, if Ms. Massey could speak to this one. And I noticed it's not signed by the law department, if that's a, is that just an oversight?
This, Mr., Dr. Raiswick?
I'm sorry. Could, Madam Chair, could you, Ms. Horn, could you restate the question?
Same, really same question for this. How is this data collected? Is it time-consuming for teachers, that kind of thing?
Now, this is actually, Prodigy is a, is a intervention software that we use already for math interventions. And this is something that our research evaluation assessment team already looks at. So basically what this is, is the company through UT wants to share the research. They don't have a lot of their own research on the effectiveness of the data, so we're already collecting this. It's just a matter of sharing it, and then they're giving some dollars back for the in-kind work that our research team is already doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeWler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Horn. Ms. Horn, I apologize. It does look like an oversight. I did review this document, and I made some, I made a notation at the bottom of the first page because I was, I was wanting to make sure that privacy law for our students was, was complied with. But, but with that, with that notation, I will go ahead and sign it, and I can do that after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So we have the motion by Gloria Dethridge, seconded by Lynn Fugit. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Item seven B, approve application and receipt of funds in the amount of $600,000 for a State of Tennessee Department of Education Innovation Zone. I-zone grant for year three of three.
Motion made by Ms. Dethridge, seconded by Ms. Owen. Discussion, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm just, I just need somebody to speak to a few of the details about how this is implemented. Who do I ask?
Dr. Raiswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Norman. Did you have a specific, or did you just want me to go over?
Well, I just, first, I just wanted to, I, I saw the breakdown in the budget, I think, what is it, five positions, six positions? Five positions. And that consumes the, the total of the grant, right?
There's actually two, two big items to it. So there are the five facilitator positions that support the three elementary priority schools and as well as Vionne Middle School. And then there's also the extension of the contract for Lawnsdale, Sarah Moore Green, and Green, which is about $240,000 of that.
Okay. Since this is year three of this process, what's our research evaluation assessment people saying about this so far?
I think, you know, we, we were encouraged based on what we've seen from the state's CUSP list that they sent out this year, which, you know, so priority schools every three years, we'll see that again happen this, at the end of the summer after this data cycle goes through. We actually didn't have any schools, so the, so the state sends out the year prior to their priority list, a CUSP list of schools that are in the bottom ten percent. But in order to be a priority school, you have to be a bottom five percent. We currently have, none of these schools are in that bottom five percent, so they're showing some gains, they're still in the bottom ten percent, so they're on the CUSP list. So we think a lot of that is due to the extended time that the teachers have had for professional development and working with students. And then also what those facilitators do is there's, you know, there's one that's a behavior liaison, one that works just with special education, one that's a numeracy facilitator, one for early lit, and one for lit. So just within those four schools, they spend extra time supporting the teachers with their needs with those students there. So we think that, you know, that and the leadership of the principals and the work of the teachers is making some difference there, even though the schools are still, you know, they're still struggling in the bottom ten percent, they've shown some progress from the last list.
Okay. My only other question is, I'm a little confused on terminology. When we say innovation, I-zone, this is, does that have some overlap with our Office of Innovation? What, what, does that have anything related to it? I don't know.
It's a good question. The, the state recognizes innovation zones, and that's what the grant is designed for. So typically, what we've understood moving forward, if, if any district has five schools that fall into that priority list or above, that they would be eligible for these grant dollars. We only had four this, this time around, and we were able to get the grant dollars. So we've done some realigning in CNI previously, that these schools were part of the innovation zone. They've, they've more recently this year been realigned back to our elementary and secondary supervisors to oversee those schools. So originally, they were in our innovation office, excuse me, I said innovation zone. Originally, they were in our innovation office, but school supervision has been moved to the secondary office and elementary office of those schools.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on Mr. Norman's question regarding the five full-time employees, and I know this is year three of the grant, what are the, and I guess this applies to most, like Title I, any grant-funded positions, how we make sure that folks understand that when they're hired on with grant dollars? And Dr. Drummond can probably answer that. And then the second part of my question is, as you mentioned, Dr. Raiswick, that there seem to be some positive gains from having these five additional staff folks, and if this is year three of the grant, and then the dollars are, you know, what are the plans then moving forward to have additional supports in place because the dollars may not be there in the additional year? So thank you all in advance.
Yeah, Dr. Drummond.
Yes, ma'am. Initially, when someone is hired under grant funding, they are notified, and then every year, based on the renewal of their contract, they are told and reminded that at the end of the school year, that it is grant-funded dollars. So they are made aware.
Okay. Great, thanks.
And Dr. Raiswick?
Thank you. A great question, because, I mean, that is the big thing when you have supports for schools, and then they make progress, and then lots of times, funding does go away. What the state has done is their SIG, their school improvement grants, and these I-zone grants, under the new ESA legislation that was passed, all of those grants are coming to an end this year. And then in the fall of next year, there will be, there will be opportunities to reapply for grants based on the status of the school. So we're hopeful that we don't have any priority schools, but in the event that we would, we'd be eligible to apply for those additional dollars. It's a challenge because we're in this kind of transition period where the dollars won't continue. So I know, you know, as far as, it's trying to keep some extended contracts for time professional development and working with students. I know the superintendent has communicated some things out of some ideas of how we might be able to offset some of that. We continue to look for plans for that. These positions are funded, you know, with soft money off of a grant. So at this time, you know, that's always, it's always difficult for us to know how we're going to fund that. There could potentially be other ideas moving into next semester if there were to be individual school-based Title I dollars. A lot of these schools receive a lot of amounts for that. So, you know, just like what usually happens with soft money, we have to try to prioritize and figure out the best way to support those.
Thank you.
Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Raiswick, I know that, that's part of the problem with this whole process, and that's, it's a state thing. They give you the funding, and then when you make progress, it dies, and then you don't have any money. And then you look up, and you're back where you started from. Has anybody talked to the state? Are they working on anything to try to continue working with, with schools that have gotten off of the list because they, because they got off the list doesn't need, they don't need any additional resources or assistance?
Great question. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Dethridge. It's a great question, and one that we have in two different arenas had conversations. Janay Harley, who is now executive director of, I'll get her title wrong, so Janay, who works for the state now, I'm not sure what her title is, who works in that department. We have talked to her and to see if there's any chance of availability, that money would be sooner so we could keep this going. That's not where the state is. And then we had a call with the commissioner and expressed that same concern, that, you know, at this time, we, we may have a, an issue with not having the dollars for a certain amount of time. So we, we've made them aware of that. So we, we've made them aware of that. We didn't, and there wasn't a solution to that at this time, but, but we have expressed that to the state.
Okay. We had a motion made by Ms. Dethridge and seconded by Ms. Owen. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 7C, approve application and receipt of funds from the Tennessee Department of Education for a 2018 Read to Be Ready Summer Program Grant in the amount of $139,400 designated for Green Mining Academy, Lawnsdale Elementary School, and Sarah Moore Green Mining Academy.
Motion by Ms. Dethridge, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing no lights, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7D, approve application and receipt of funds in the amount of $121,733 for a Title X McKinney-Vento Grant designated for tutoring, materials, supplies, student transportation, parent engagement, and staff development training.
Motion by Mr. Norman. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Dethridge. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7E, approve application, receipt of funds and grant contract with the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Arts Commission for Moreland Heights Elementary School in the amount of $12,000 with required matching funds in the amount of $6,000 for the term July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018.
Motion by, well? Ms. Roundtree. Seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Dethridge.
Oh, thank you. I don't really have a question. I just wondered, both E and F are the same but different. Is it because of the different amounts? Is that why we had to come in two different times, since it's a total?
Dr. Roswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Dethridge. I think this is how they've done this. One of those is basically for the stipend, for the, the expert artist that will be part of the classes at teachers' request. And then the other one covers a lot of materials, like supplies for that. So the state has always granted it that way until we asked the same question in Board Prep this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Item E. Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7F, approve application, receipt of funds and grant contract with the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Arts Commission for Moreland Heights Elementary School in the amount of $8,000 with required matching funds in the amount of $4,000 for the term of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7G, approve application and receipt of funds from the Knoxville TBA Employees Credit Union for a 2017 Educator Project Grant in the total amount of $19,655.03, providing up to $1,500 each for Bearden, Carter, Central, Farragut, Fulton, Gibbs, Halls, Carnes, Powell, Southdole, and West High Schools, and Career Magnet, Harden Valley, and Allen and STEM Academies.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Nor, Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7H, approve receipt of funds for a 2018 Target Field Trip Grant for Beaumont Mining Academy in the amount of $700.
Motion by Ms. Dethridge, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7I, approve application and receipt of grant funds from Kinder Morgan Foundation in the amount of $3,050 for Dogwood Elementary School designated for support of the music program.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on this? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7J, approve donation from Farragut Primary School, PTA, in the amount of $47,874.65 for the benefit of various programs and used by Farragut Elementary School.
Motion made by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion on this item? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7K, approve donation from the town of Farragut in the amount of $22,000 for the benefit of various programs and used by Farragut Primary School.
Motion made by Ms. Horn. Seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
7L, approve donation from the Gibbs High School Foundation, up to $30,000 designated for upgrades to the Gibbs High School auditorium.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. McMillan made the motion to approve, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Discussion, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In looking at the, the information, is this money that's sort of passed through, it says something to, to the effect that the church is providing the foundation with the money in return, I guess, for potential use? Is that right? Russ, I see you.
Miss, yeah. Mr. Oaks.
It's my understanding that one of the priorities for the new Gibbs High School Foundation is to improve the facility for the auditorium. And the foundation approached the church about partnering with them in order to do some of that. So this, this work, and this is largely lighting work at this, this point, I think they have, I think they have more that they want to do and we're going to work with them on that. But this, this is to, since the foundation, it sort of instigated it and approached the church, the church made the donation to the foundation, and then the foundation is going to donate the work and the equipment and, and all to the school.
And it says something to the effect of five years, the church would have the, the option of using it, up to five years. Is that correct?
That's what it says in the agreement between the two of them.
Right.
But understanding that, you know, an agreement between those two individuals does not bind the school or the school system.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay. Motion was made by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move to contracts, Ms. Coop.
8A, approve contract with Evans Ailey Construction Incorporated for additions and renovations to Enscape Elementary School in the amount of $5,031,000.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this? Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to alert the board and the audience that this may be the first renovation or school building that is going to have a, instead of the traditional, what we call hard structures, which usually deals with things underground, let me just shorten this. It, it's going to be a green accommodation of water. And it will be in the form of, and this has been approved and it's in the design, in the design phase and gotten through the bid process. So what that means is, the Enscape Elementary kids are going to have a, they're going to have a rain garden instead of a hole in the ground to accommodate water. And so it'll be, we hope to, we hope it's a, a good learning experience for them and a new opportunity when it comes to schools and renovations. So we've been working on that and we're real proud of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Okay. Then, motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
8B, approve term contracts with K&amp;F Construction Incorporated, Shelton General Contractors, Skilled Services Quality Construction LLC, and Stukesbury Construction Incorporated for provision of miscellaneous construction services for a period of one year, which may be extended for an additional four years, one year at a time, for a total of five years, for projects as approved by the Knox County Schools Budget.
Do I hear a motion? Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on this item? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 9A, approve retainer agreement with Millsap-Sgowan Government Relations for provision of governmental consulting services to the Coalition of Large Area School Systems for the term of January 1 through December 31, 2018, at a cost of $37,500 using general purpose funds.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Ms. Roundtree.
Chair. I just wanted to, Terry had sent forward an email to the board, I think it was earlier today, but I just wanted to speak in support of continuing our relationship with Millsap-Sgowan and Class. The email that we had received spoke of relying on our delegation to lobby for us in Nashville, which, I guess if you followed the legislative, legislation that they introduced, it has all been contradictory to this board's legislative priorities. So just briefly, vouchers, charter school expansion, and anti-pre-K legislation. So unfortunately for this board and the citizens of Knox County, we do not have a relationship with our delegation where we're on the same page. And it's not that these are other legislators that are introducing these bills, it's the legislation that, that is coming directly from the folks that represent us. So I think it's in our best interest to continue working with Millsap-Sgowan and Class so that we can continue to fight for our students here in Knox County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norman, you were next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a good point, I think, and certainly one that we could talk about. But I, but I do agree with the writer of the letter to us today, and that is, and I, and I think even though we've experienced some adverse legislation from our legislative delegation, I think that, that speaks to our responsibility. And so we've got these seven, these seven representatives and two senators. We have us, we have our mayor, we have our superintendent. It just all speaks to our responsibility to, to get the, the types of things into legislation that we want. And I think we're just sort of, to go ahead and, and spend this kind of money on a lobbyist when really it's our responsibility, I just don't agree with it. So I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Owen.
I responded to that email, to the person who sent it to us, and I, I'd like to read part of what I responded, and it sort of piggybacks off of what Ms. Roundtree said, but not as nicely, I'm sorry. "It would be wonderful if our legislators would lobby on our behalf. Unfortunately, it's been our local legislators pushing forward on the majority of harmful legislation that has impacted our schools and all schools in Tennessee. They accuse board members of only being interested in what teachers want and refuse to acknowledge the decades of experience many of us have in education. They push so-called studies by groups funded by Alec, Rode, Gates, and others who have clear interest in profiting from the privatization of public schools, and fully ignore real research that has been done by experts in the field and found to be true nationally and internationally. If anyone thinks those names and others aren't important to understanding what we do every day, they haven't been paying attention for the last decade. Our legislators refuse to listen to us in meetings and have gone so far as to insult board members in person, deny us access to meetings that they have with teachers. It is sad that we need a lobbying group to let our legislators hear our concerns, rather than having them shared by our own representatives. Local legislators have made it clear that they have no intention of allowing teachers, parents, or communities to remain in control of public schools. Our local legislators have also made it clear that at their first opportunity, they want to push through legislation to end school board elections." That is not a group that is going to lobby for what our locally elected and current, for what your locally elected school board knows is best for students. Trying to take control of, of public schools out of the control of the taxpayers is seriously problematic. So I think it's very unfortunate that we need a lobbying group. I think it's horrible that we need a lobbying group, but we need a lobbying group. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Dethridge, your light went off. Do you still wish to, you don't wish to speak now?
No, I was just gonna, she probably said whatever needed to be said in that was, is that even though we do have legislators, our legislators and mayors and everyone speaking on our behalf, I think we need a lobbyist that are on campus, on legislative plaza, on a regular basis, keeping track of what's coming out, what's going to be discussed and, and speaking on our behalf. We're just one of the four largest in the state, so they're not only doing it for us, they're doing it for everybody in the state of Tennessee, which is very beneficial to us. And we don't want to be on the outside looking in, we want to be a part of that discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Oh, I turned my head and look at all these lights. Ms. Fugit, you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to speak in support of this. I, I plan to, to vote in support of this. They have been representing this school system as part of Class for a number of years, and, and we can talk about our local legislators, whatever, there are issues that are germane to large school systems that aren't germane to other school systems. The Achievement School District, some of the Priority School issues, and while there are other people that pay attention, I think we have been well-served by having people on the Hill who are looking out for sometimes legislators from smaller communities that will introduce legislation that will only affect the four largest school systems. And, and that puts TSBA, who also represents school boards, in a very difficult position when the majority of their members may be for something. So I just think we've been well-served by having other eyes and ears down there, and I intend to support the contract.
And in confering with Ms. Roundtree, she said you were next, Ms. Horn, and then we'll go to Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with, with a lot of what Ms. Dethridge and Ms. Owen and Ms. Fugit and, and Ms. Roundtree have said. I have been impressed with the, the grasp that they have had on these issues, and I feel that they do have our students' best interest in mind. I agree with what Ms. Owen said, it's a shame that we need, that we need lobbyists, but I feel we do, and they certainly help keep us informed on what's going on in Nashville since we're not there. So I plan to support this contract. Thank you.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As of today, session opened, yesterday actually, there are already 199 education bills, 199. There is no physical way that, that even a board member could, could track that. I mean, they, they, there's very sophisticated software now that, that is, is used to, to even keep up with legislation, not just educationally, but legislation in all areas. Once you ferret through the 199, and actually, I think this is correct, at the end of last year, there ended up being almost 400 bills that were introduced. So to, to think that, that we as a board could, could have any hope of keeping up and tracking that would, would pretty much be, I believe, an impossibility. It's also very important that there is a physical presence of someone on the Hill during legislative season to represent and speak up in real time for, for these bills. Many times in committees, there's amendments that are, are passed out that, that certainly we've not laid eyes on, and, and many other, even other legislators have not laid eyes on, and those are acted on immediately. If there's not somebody there that can grab hold of that in real time and read that and look at that and, and speak to it, then that, that's, that's the way sometimes things get into law that we wish hadn't. So I definitely support this contract, and, you know, whether we like it or don't like it, the fact of the matter is, when, when this volume of legislation is, is introduced year after year, we've got to watch out for, for ourselves and for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. I want to publicly thank you for serving as the Class Representative last year and this year. So the motion was made by Amber, oh, Mr. Norman.
Okay. Just one more thing. I, the, the, the main problem here that I have with, with this is not that this type of lobbyist would be useful in keeping up with the amount of, of legislation, although I think, I really do think we've got representatives that are going to be on educational committees and subcommittees, and they're the ones that really should be the, the people who are looking out for us on that. But nevertheless, the other, the other side of this is, to hire this lobbyist and this board to admit, we don't have a very good relationship with this group of legislators, well, let's just go ahead and keep it like it is. And I think that's a bad idea. So another reason I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't feel the need this evening to delve into our long history with our legislative delegation, but I do want to state on the record that myself personally, and I know members of this board, have reached out numerous times to the delegation, have tried to maintain and grow a relationship with them, and I would be open to hearing what suggestions you have to go beyond what has already been done at this point. And it doesn't have to be tonight, I mean, in general, it could be something at a work session of, how can we foster a positive relationship? Because I know that, as I said, I'm not the only one on this board that has tried to work with their representative and have a conversation about empirical data and evidence and research that shows, for example, things like pre-K are absolutely essential to educational outcomes.
Okay. Thank you. The motion was made, Mr. McMillan?
Just a, a brief comment in reference to the relationship that we have with the Just a brief comment in reference to the relationship that we have with the state legislative people. And I'm not trying in any way to defend them, but they probably believe that they represent the taxpayers, and that's where the disagreement comes in. Some members of this board take the opposite view on certain things. In each case, each side, in their mind, they are reflective of what the majority of citizens want. And I don't know that, you know, you can sit down and talk about it, but unless you're extremely convincing, it's going to be difficult to bring either side, for either side to convince the other. It's just one of those things where you may agree to disagree, so to speak. Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Okay. Any more discussion? Motion was made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Norman. All in favor? Ms. Fugit, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion passes.
9B, approved request to add two school administrator positions at Vine Middle School.
Motion made by Ms. Dethridge. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Fugit. Discussion. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just have a question about the number of administrators at these three schools now, the three middle schools. Is this a trend? Is this what, how many administrators do we have at Northwest and Whittles and so on and so forth?
Superintendent Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Norman, we sort of anticipated questions along that line, so I'd ask Ms. Hickman to get those numbers for us. So if she would come forward to the podium, if the board would permit, and let her speak. While she's on her way. Let me just say what the thought that went into this. First, I've asked Dr. Ryswick and his team, we have some schools that are in the bottom 10%. We want no schools that are in the bottom 10%. And what I've charged Dr. Ryswick with doing is, let's make sure we don't have these schools in the, now, I'm not going to guarantee that they're not going to be in the bottom 10% next year, but we're going to work like, as hard as we know how to work, to try to keep that from happening. And in his team, Mr. Trent and Cheryl have worked on this, and also I see Desiree back there, Ms. Jones, who's principal of Vine Middle School. But we've had some success at Northwest, and we've had some success at South Door, paying anywhere from, I don't know, 120, 150 students, additional students at Vine next year. We would like to have that administrative team in place prior to that, just because of the fact that it does take a little time to, for the team to gel. But the setup that we have at Northwest and at South Door Middle School would be two administrators per grade level. These would be administrative assistant positions. So one thing we did look at, from a budget perspective, if we do this, can we do, can we find a way to make it budget neutral, which I think we have found? But one administrator primarily with the expertise in curriculum and instruction to help at that grade level, one administrator to help from a discipline perspective with that administrative team. So two, the setup would be two administrators at each grade level. So I think, I think we've thought through this as best we can. We feel like that if we want to try to work to make sure that we have no schools in the bottom 10%, this is one step we could take right now and hopefully make a difference between now and the end of the school year. We only have a few months left for this semester, but that was kind of the rationale and the thinking. But I know you asked for numbers, so I just wanted an opportunity to kind of explain to the board what the thought pattern was, you know, with this request. And just appreciate your consideration for this. And it's been mentioned before, I'll just throw another little side note in, when we do these things, you know, if we take steps to get the schools out of the bottom 10%, we can't, and they get out of the bottom 10%, we can't forget how we got them out of the bottom 10%. So I know sometimes it's based on soft money, but we've got to make sure that what we do, when it's working, we got to keep it working. Now, you know, is that always fair? Well, you know, some schools do right well, based on how they're staffed right now, administrative wise and teaching wise, they're not in the bottom 10%. And I'd love to have money to do everything for everybody, but we don't. But we do have to really consider what these schools that are in the bottom 10% need. And we've had, I don't know the numbers, Kelly probably knows, knows, I know Desiree, how many new staff members you have this year? We can't, we've got principals, we feel like, who want to be where they are. We've got teachers who feel like they want to be where they are. And when we put these new administrators, we're putting people in that want to be where we're going to put them. And we've got to incentivize, I talked with you a little bit, sent you some information about 216-day contract, you know, the work is hard. The teaching work is extremely hard. And we can't have the kind of turnover that we're faced with right now, and have all these new teachers all the time, and expect that we're gonna make some gains. And Cheryl, I hope I'm not taking what you were gonna say.
You're right.
But anyway, that's just kind of the thinking. So we're looking at extended contracts for teachers, 216 days to incentivize them. And I know the principals have said that that is, they've had teachers talk with them and say, "Hey, if I don't have an extended contract, you know, I'll apply to go somewhere else." Because, you know, the work is hard everywhere, but the work is extremely hard in some of these, in some of our schools where the students are behind and need more, more and better instruction, I guess, for lack of a better word. So anyway, Cheryl, I'll let you talk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. You have said exactly what I was going to say, but I will say this. We pride ourselves on being problem solvers, and right now, we have a problem at Vine Middle School. They have been a priority school. We have shown improvement at Vine. We want to show more improvement. So we have worked, Danny and I have put our minds together, we've worked very hard to come up with a solution for how are we going to continue to show the improvement we need to show at that school? You want specific numbers, Danny's going to give you those. But what I can tell you, before he gets to those numbers, is what we have done at South Door Middle School and Northwest Middle School is making a difference. We want to make a difference at Vine Middle School as well. We feel like getting the right people to lead that school, we've had great leaders there, but like Mr. Thomas said, it's hard work. You can't do this forever. We've got to keep bringing people in that are willing to do this kind of work. So Mr. Trent's going to give you a little bit more of the specific numbers and figures that we pulled together that helped us come to this plan for this particular school. So Mr. Trent, come ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to give you a little bit of information where this makes sense. A couple of years ago, and Amber can talk about this, South Door Middle, we was having a lot of problems, so we put a new structure in, and I will admit, we brought in Andrew Brown, who has done a marvelous job, but he still had that support. So we did the same thing at Northwest this year. So Vine currently has about 340 students, and we're going to rezone approximately 150 to 160 students over there next year. So we're looking at 500 students, low poverty, low academics, and they bring a lot of emotional challenges to our staff. Right now, the school is at 9% proficiency rate. Now, folks, that's not a good rate, we've got some good growth scores, but we feel like some things we can put in, we can move those numbers up. They have 20% special ed population. So with that, there's a lot of IEP meetings and M-team meetings, so it takes up a lot of extra time. Here's what the administrative team consists of right now. Desiree Jones is the principal, she's a first-year principal. She's very qualified, she'll do a great job, but this is her first year. I have a new assistant principal there, I have a second assistant principal, this is her second year, and Joe Lancaster's been there about six years. So that's a very young, inexperienced team that we need to build some ports around. There's 32 certified teachers, and I think someone asked this just a minute ago, 50% of those teachers are first- or second-year teachers. And even Cindy thought this, those teachers stay two or three years, and then they move somewhere else because it drains them physically, emotionally, immediately, so it's a tough job. And we need to give those people support. So about every year, we're hiring anywhere from between eight and 15 new teachers. So right now, each grade-level administrator is spending approximately four hours a day handling discipline, another hour in AVM meetings, then cafeteria duty, then bus dismissal, bus arrival. So folks, out of the seven and a half-hour day, we've got them tied up six and a half hours. They can't even hardly get down the hallways to check on teachers and kids. So it's what we're recommending, it's the same structure at South Door and Northwest implemented, where there'd be the one executive principal, and then at each grade level, we have an assistant principal. And then it's what we've found to be very beneficial, is with these administrative assistants, it's probably the best training ground we have for future assistant principals. So these people are willing to go in and work on a teacher contract, we do give them a few extra days. So two heads are better than one, in my opinion. And that way, if somebody's in a meeting, then we've got another administrator available for support, teachers, classroom visits, those type of things. So really, never should it be that two of those people are tied up in the same thing. It frees them up. Plus, with one experienced person and one novice person, it's provided a great collaboration, and I'll be glad to take it to either one of those schools, and some of you have been there. It's really dynamic, and we actually put those people out in the middle of the grade. We take a classroom if it's available, and we have two teachers in there, I mean, two administrators, and sometimes we even have a counselor. So it's been very successful. Will it turn over tonight? Probably not. But I have confidence in this team, and we're going to set some goals. We think we can take that proficiency rate up somewhere between 3% and 5% this year and continue to grow on that. And bottom line, folks, it's the right thing to do for kids, and the right thing to do for that staff and community over there.
And do you have numbers?
What numbers do you want, sir?
Like at Northwest, in terms of administrators and?
It's the exact same. We have one executive principal, three assistant principals, and three administrative assistants. Now, I will tell you, Vine will look a little different because we just moved Kelly Forster from Byington-Salway over to Vine, that was one of Bob's moves over the break. So they will actually have four assistant principals and two administrative assistants. But they'll both be the same as far as support people.
And I think, and I know Mr. Norman may want numbers, you know, by school, in terms of assistant principals, AAs, and principal by individual school.
Yeah, I've got a couple more questions.
Okay, but I mean, we'll get, I want to be sure that that's something to be helpful to you, so we'll get that to the board.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Norman?
Thanks, Danny. And I don't think anybody here is trying to do worse by kids.
Oh, no, I know.
We're all trying to do good things, the right things, best things we can do. When you say, you did mention a couple of things that were confusing, though. You said 9% proficiency. Can you explain, is it proficiency? Is that what you said?
Achievement proficiency on the TCAP data.
Okay. So that means 9% of the kids are?
Proficient in 91% or not.
Proficient in what? In reading and math?
Math, English, and science.
Okay. So 9%.
Now, I don't have the exact breakdown on each one of those, I could get that for you. The other thing we've done, Desiree and her team, we've already identified 59 students that we feel like we can move. And we feel very confident that we can move 10 to 15 of those kids this year, and hopefully more. So therefore, you would get the 3% to 5% increase each year.
Okay. Now, I'm a little confused about numbers. When I read the attachment, I thought it said that each grade level would have a principal and two assistant principals. So that would be nine administrators in the middle school?
No, it would actually be one executive principal, which would be Desiree, and then at each grade level, we would have two.
Okay, so that would be seven.
So it would actually be seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the model at South Door and at Northwest?
It's at all three schools.
Okay. And so what are you using to tell us that it's really turned out to be successful, in fact, at Northwest and South Door?
South Door is probably more of a success story, because I've got two years on it. I think the first year that I was over there serving as supervisor, we had, I think, over 1,500 discipline referrals. And because we've got more presence, and we're doing a lot more PBIS, restorative practices things, we've been able to reduce the discipline number. The academic data we're getting there, we raised achievement at South Door, but we didn't have very good growth. And we think that had come, but principals are able to meet with teachers and PLCs, they're in cafeteria, they're in the hallways. So I just think the collaboration will increase things.
Okay. I'm all for good stuff.
Yeah.
You know, whatever's good.
You know, it's a gamble, but I feel pretty good about it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Trent, you talked about at Vine, when the rezoning had taken place, approximately you would have 500 students.
Yes, sir.
And you'll have a total of seven principals, correct? Okay. After the rezoning takes place at South Door, what will that leave? Will it leave approximately 1,000 students at South Door?
I think it'd be somewhere between 900 and 1,000.
Okay, okay. And what about Northwest?
Northwest is approximately 900 students. We've seen growth there the last two years. I think they've gone from 750 to about 900.
Okay. So these, after this takes place, these numbers should stay fairly consistent in the middle schools. I mean, I know they're not going to stay exact, but there shouldn't be any large jumps, so to speak.
I would think they would remain pretty consistent.
Okay. And so at each of the three middle schools, you would have seven principals total to deal with the kids? Okay. One other question. In the memo, it says that this change will not require any additional funds due to the fact we are repurposing some existing positions. What are you repurposing?
I could tell you that, Gary, do you want to, Joe, who's the finance guy, but I know when we did this, we ended up saving.
It says you saved $9,000.
I'm not the guy that crunches those numbers. I do know we saved money. That wasn't the intent, just the way things turned out. I think we were progressive instead of reactive.
That's fine, I'm glad that you saved money. I just want to know where the, you know, where the positions that you're repurposing come from.
Kelly's one of them. If you don't mind.
Go right ahead, Ms. Hill.
One thing we did was move Kelly Forster, who was principal at Byington-Salway, to Vine. What's going to happen now at Byington-Salway is that one of the assistant principals from Karnes High School will be down at the Byington-Salway side. So we don't have a head principal at Byington-Salway now. We have, and that's how we ran Byington-Salway for many years.
Okay. And that's the total savings there?
That's one thing we did to save. There's some other ways.
Shut it, Lynn. We were kind of looking ahead at rezoning, and we got with Bob and John and some other folks, and we actually was probably going to lose an AP at South Door Middle, and at, well, actually a couple, but Carter Middle. So both of those principals had Leadership Fellows, so we felt like we could absorb some things there. We did that. So we actually moved those APs, so that was additional savings.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Danny and Cheryl. I just wanted, since you mentioned South Door Middle, and I've been over there quite a bit and seen the changes that have taken place, just to answer anecdotally some of the questions. I think having the assistant principal and then the AA there has really allowed for greater collaboration, particularly in the PLCs, and I think that's where you have seen some of the increases in achievement, because rather than maybe having the majority of the time of than maybe having the majority of the time of the AP being tied up with disciplinary issues, there's another set of hands then to work directly with the teaching staff and make sure that they are integrating things across the curriculum, that the teaching team is on the same page. You see the kids, I think, under this model, and this is just from my experience walking through the halls, it seems like the kids have a better connection to the administrative team because they have, they see them more frequently in the hallway since there is two people on each grade level that are always out and visible in the school. And so I think it's been a really positive change. And then while it's not directly tied to achievement, I do think having a strong admin team is essential for our teacher retention. And so I know both Cheryl and Danny can speak to that. At South Dole, we had quite a bit of turnover, and since this model and since Andrew has been put in place as administrator there, we've had very little turnover. And so I think it's certainly been a combination of factors. And I tip my hat to Andrew. He is an amazing servant leader, and we're so lucky to have him in South Knox. But I do think that this model certainly has supported the success of that school. Thank you all.
Ms. DeTherich?
And to tie in on that, the first year Andrew was there, he hired between 40 and 50 teachers. This past year, we hired about eight, and most of those because of relocation, advancement, or a spouse got a job somewhere else. So that's a huge tribute to him and his team.
Thank you. Ms. DeTherich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you for seeing the need and making the necessary changes. I've talked to the principal, Ms. Jones, and she did have a little answer about what's getting ready to happen, and she needed the support, and she knows what's going on in the building, and she was concerned. And you guys have looked at the situation and have made some suggestions, and I appreciate that, and I thank you, and I know that she does, and I appreciate all of the dedication because when you have new teacher turnover the way she does and being a first-year principal, it's hard. And I don't think people understand how hard it is in those, in our schools, in our first district. And sometimes you do have to make those hard decisions and put the resources in the need where they really are needed because we are 10%, in the lower 10%, and we need these type of changes, and we need these type of resources and these types of adjustments. And I appreciate the board being considerate and understanding of what the school needs, and hopefully they'll understand and make the right decision and approve this so that we can move forward and making sure that they get what they need. And it's all about the kids, regardless of what we say. It's all about the kids. And what we're doing is something that we hope that will be beneficial to them and hopefully provide them a little bit better opportunity to be successful in their future. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Danny. The, this is really a statement. I know that some on the board have had some real questions about the way our administrative numbers have grown. Did you hear me? The way our administrative numbers have grown, like our, especially our AP numbers. And when you look at it, it is a little bit alarming. But then you hear about this kind of a plan going on, and clearly the need must be there. Well, it is there. It is there. And I do support this. This board, I just encourage that we keep that in mind when we start looking at these numbers and see how our administrative numbers are growing. This is one of the reasons why. At the same time, though, as they're growing in these schools, they are not growing in the other schools, you know? I think probably everyone on this board sits and has a middle school that, or a high school that are struggling. I mean, they've got challenges and needs, and maybe the discipline numbers don't look so bad, but they're responsible for twice the number of kids. So I just want to be sure that through all of this, that we all keep in mind that the needs are at all schools. And, you know, I know that Mr. Corn was a good sport about going along with losing, you know, an AP for, to go to Byington part-time. But any way you cut it, it's still a hit. It's still a hit on other schools. So this is, among other things, something we probably need to look real hard at when budget time rolls around again, is just making sure everybody gets the support that they need.
Ms. DeTherich, I will let Ms. Horne speak first, if that's okay, since she hasn't spoken to this. Ms. Horne?
Thank you. And I appreciate the innovative plan, and certainly I think the supports are needed, and so I intend to support this. And I just wanted to piggyback on what Ms. Hill says because, of course, when I look at the numbers, you know, I think we have two APs and one administrative assistant for 1,400 kids at Farragut. So, you know, it's, the numbers are certainly vastly different. However, you know, I'm going to go back to the thing I kept talking about last year as we're talking, thinking about budgets coming up, that, you know, we are, most of the schools that I represent still need additional classroom teachers for RTI. So not only do we need to make sure that we're looking at the administrators, but I just have to bring that up since we're talking about budgets and what our schools need, that we have, that is still a serious need. I know that the legislature is planning to review that again, which I'm happy, and I hope they'll do something about it. But that is, we still have teachers that desperately need help with RTI that, so that they can move their students in their buildings. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fugit, your light was... Okay, so over to Ms. DeTherich.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I do agree, we all do have, need more support, more in our building. But when you have a kid, when you, looking at the achievement and looking at the value add compared to what you all are dealing with, compared to what we're dealing with, the percent of kids coming in that's not on grade level, I do understand. But at the same time, it's hard for me to sit here and feel like you're in the same situation, your schools are in the same situation as mine, until you have to be in the building and understand what they're dealing with. I understand that you have the need. I'm not saying we don't. We do have it all across Knox County. But when you have the massive amount in a building that you all don't even have to even think about or to deal with because you have kids coming in on grade level, and a lot of times, they're already at achievement levels way before, ahead of what our kids are. So I understand when you start talking about budgets, I hear it now. When it comes to budget, we're going to start trying to figure out how to make sure my schools get what your schools get. And I'm not sure that's what you're saying, but that's what I'm hearing. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that that's not what you're saying. You're saying we just know that there is issues in every building in Knox County, and we need more money from the state level and from wherever we can get it to where everybody has the same amount of support. So I'm just going to make sure that we all on the same page here. I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus. But we do understand that people in the, out in the audience may understand that, especially in my district, we know what we have to deal with on a regular basis. And it's similar, and when someone from, say, Farragut and whatever comes and says that, they're going, well, they don't understand. We do understand. It's not that we're not sympathetic, and we support that everybody in Knox County, every school, needs support. But sometimes ours look a little different on the inside because of what's coming in the building and what's coming in every month, every year, not on grade level and needed that additional. That's all I want to say.
I was just going to kind of speak to my esteemed colleague across the room to say that everybody understands that what we need. And the bottom line is, we all need more than we can afford, unfortunately. And I do think we all take an oath, understanding that we represent Knox County schools, and that means every student in our school system. We are elected by certain districts. We look out for them. But in the end of it, it's, we're responsible for every child in Knox County. And schools have different cultures, different characters, and different needs. And I appreciate the administration's willingness to look at what will work best in a situation, and that it's not cookie cutter across the district because not all schools are alike. So I plan to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treant and Cheryl, or Danny and Cheryl. Okay, I don't see any other lights on. If my memory serves me correct, Ms. DeTherich made the motion, and Ms. Fugit seconded it. And with no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item 9C, approve rezoning recommendation for Dogwood, Green, Sarah Moore Green, and South Knoxville Elementary Schools.
That's moved.
Motion made by, Mr. Roundtree seconded by Ms. DeTherich, and we have public forum speakers to this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one, two, three, four folks signed up to speak to this specific item on our agenda this evening. Our first speaker is Carolyn Williams.
I am Carolyn Williams, and I reside in Island Home Park neighborhood. And I am here to support the rezoning of South Knoxville Elementary School because we have approximately 85 children from three weeks to probably 16, 17 that attend Knox County schools or are going to attend. And we have folks here tonight that will speak whose children are not in the school system yet. But we would like for our children to be able to walk from our neighborhood, which is one mile, 1.1 mile from our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is bounded by the river, Tennessee School for the Death, Island Home Airport, over to Island Home Avenue where the Baptist Church is, Island Home Baptist Church. Then it stops or starts at the pillars at the new Riverview Apartments down on the River Walk. It's a very compact neighborhood. There's 210 households in our neighborhood. It is walkable because every one of our houses has a sidewalk in front of it that will lead directly to South Knoxville Elementary School. We have bike lanes that our children can either be walk to school or ride their bikes and be supervised. It's very important, we feel, because this is a community school, that we be zoned there. Currently, we're zoned to Dogwood, and we are not objecting to anything that happens at Dogwood because we feel both schools are good. But Dogwood's three miles away. And our parents can drive up Island Home Avenue onto Sevier, drop their kids off, go to town, go to work. Whereas if they aren't, they have to go three miles, drop them off, turn around, come back, that same three miles. And we just really would appreciate you supporting the rezoning for this. I've lived in Island Home Park since 1971. When my son, who is now 42, was in elementary school, they were zoned for South Knoxville Elementary. Then when the issues came up and we had to have the integration, that split, and we were no longer able to go to. And I understand the people from East Knoxville, I've heard them speak, I've spoken to them, and they feel the same way we do. And I'm sure that some of them will be speaking too. Thank you very much for your consideration, and we hope that you support our views.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Celeste Carruthers.
Thank you, and good evening. I live on Island Home Boulevard, up the road from Carolyn, and we are zoned for Dogwood. And I send my kindergartner to South Knoxville Elementary. And before I was a parent to a kindergartner, I was a volunteer at both Dogwood and South Knoxville through Junior Achievement or the Great Schools Partnership. And in both schools, I saw really dedicated teachers in a place where my kids could do really well. So my support for rezoning our neighborhood to South Knoxville Elementary is not any kind of complaint against Dogwood echoing what my neighbor, Carolyn, had said. Ultimately, we tried our luck with the transfer process with South Knoxville Elementary because of the convenience, because of the kind of walkability and the bikeability between our home and South Knoxville Elementary. The South Waterfront Development Area begins just outside of our neighborhood and includes the school, and it's really part of a community that we feel like we are a part of as well. So I'm very strongly supportive of this piece of the rezoning measure. I don't speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, but I have been kind of reporting on rezoning developments to them through our neighborhood-wide email group, and the majority of responses have been very supportive. A couple have noted that, you know, Dogwood is also a good school, consistent with my own observations. And many were kind of surprised that our piece of the rezoning is contingent on another neighborhood north of the river in the vicinity of Dandridge and Riverside avenues moving as well. That piece of the rezoning discussion in public has dominated the conversation, rightly so because it affects two and a half times more kids than the South Knoxville Elementary rezoning. I am not going to kind of weigh in on that piece because I'm so vested in, you know, having our neighborhood rezoned for South Knoxville Elementary. I've enjoyed going to the public forums and listening to community members kind of voice their opinions about this, and I have faith that the board is also listening to community members and that they will act in the best interests of kids in these two zones. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reverend John Butler. And Reverend, as you're coming down, you signed up to two separate agenda items, so we'll, I'll let you split your time accordingly. You get five minutes and for both of them, so...
I try to take a minute and a half on this.
Okay, we'll watch you.
My name is John Butler. I live at 1324 Eric Cross Streak, Knoxville, 37915. And I'm also here on behalf of the NWACP, which I am the Knoxville branch president. I want to thank the superintendent and the staff for the work in responding to the community. There was a meeting at Vine Middle School. I think our chair was there as well as other board members. And you heard that community, Eastside Community, speak out and said we wanted our kids to come back from across the river. We thank you for the rezoning of the middle school. We're looking forward to that working and even the discussion you had tonight about improving the education opportunities at Vine and now with Green and Sarah Moore Green. So we do want to thank you for the work. Thank you for the public hearings and having everyone have an opportunity. The NWACP is in support and would encourage the board, and I would even say softly demand the board, approve this rezoning because it's what the community, what your constituents have asked for. So we thank you for the work that you've put in and the work that you will continue to do to make sure that we have quality schools in our neighborhoods, quality neighborhood schools that everybody in every district can attend and be proud of. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum on this agenda item.
Okay. Is there any discussion by the board on this item? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Superintendent Thomas and the staff. We actually had two separate meetings for this rezoning item after the first initial meeting at Dogwood, and there was comment and feedback that a second rezoning meeting would be necessary to gather more input from more of the community. And so, you know, the staff went above and beyond to get that meeting scheduled and on the books prior to, prior to the holiday time getting really busy. And so I appreciate all of the insight that has been taken into consideration for this rezoning. And I just wanted to briefly, I know you all have probably looked at the maps and read through the memorandum, but I also did want to address the, another piece of this that really wasn't discussed at either of the public meetings, but that there is another housing development that's going to be going in place in South Knox. So if you're familiar with where the Bojangles is on Chapman Highway, there's going to be a housing development that's going in there as well. And so that section is actually currently zoned for South Knox Elementary. And so based upon the number of students that would go in that housing development, it could also potentially, you know, cause a future rezoning. So I appreciate, again, thinking proactively, knowing that that is, the housing development's coming in and sort of trying to shift to accommodate not only our community needs that we've heard from this evening and at our meetings, but also with the housing development and growth that is taking place. So I appreciate the work of the superintendent and his staff, and I intend to support this. So I appreciate the work of the superintendent and his staff, and I intend to support this rezoning. Thank you. Oh, and the grandfathering, sorry, just let me add really quickly. The grandfathering that was discussed, similar to the previous rezoning, I think that also keeps open for kids that are at Dogwood that want to remain there, the ability to continue on at Dogwood. And with the sibling provision, I think that's a generous grandfathering, and hopefully if folks are interested, they will be able to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this item of rezoning? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item 9D, approve legislative priorities of the Knox County Board of Education for two thousand and eighteen.
I move.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Discussion, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Ms. Public Speaker. I'm sorry.
We have one public, yes, Reverend Butler, the remainder of your time, sir. We'll let him, we'll get the clock up there.
Thank you. John Butler, thirteen-twenty-four Ericor Street, three-seven-nine-one-five. I looked at the legislative information you put out, and I would have to say it almost mirrors what the NWACP sees as issue. So we are in agreement, and we will be an advocate for public schools in Knox County. I did have a question as I look back this afternoon. You did have one on there about the grading of schools. Did you take that one off, or did I just miss it?
No, it's still on there.
Still on there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that is a great concern for us, particularly because, as you talked about, the bottom ten percent or the bottom five percent. And if you assign those grade levels, then we know what that looks like. And we hope that even if the law, if it doesn't change, the requirement doesn't change, that Knox County Schools will look at a way, making sure that we understand that when you give grades to people, I'll say to someone, "You're not an F student. You may have gotten an F, but you're not an F student." And also understanding how we get better. I think this past year, as I was hearing, Knox County missed schools of excellence because of not enough kids took a test or something like that. And that doesn't say that you're not a school of excellence, it's just because of that reason. But we have to acknowledge that when you hear that a school is at nine percent proficiency, that it needs some work. We have to acknowledge that, we have to look at our schools and make sure that kids in this community are going to get what they need. But we also want to make sure that we don't let labels define us. And so we do have that concern, and so I will be looking at talking with the superintendent and with the board as how we can help. I know I heard someone talk about how we can talk to our own legislators. I do have a solution for legislators who are not in support of public schools. And I say replace them. I say let's replace them with people who are in favor of public schools. And so when our legislators run again, rather than asking what their party is, let's ask them, "Do you support public schools?" If they don't support public schools, then let's say, "Well, we're going to need to find somebody who can." And I mean that sincerely, but I'm also serious because if we say we want legislators who are going to support us, let's ask them when it's time to vote for them. Likewise, have a county mayor who's going to give us money for our schools.
Thank you. We have one more public speaker for this agenda item, Madam Chair, Kim Kreditch.
Hi, Kim Kreditch, Knox County Schools, County. I'd like to speak in support of one of the legislative items, and that is to support KCS urging the General Assembly to add RTI squared positions to the BEP funding formula. Yes, we do need funding to staff RTI squared positions because special education, especially resource teachers, are being pulled away from their resource duties to provide interventions that do not even require special education teachers. So this has led to what I see as the veritable disappearance of the important support of resource as a supplementary support to students of all levels, all academic levels with disabilities, and that's part of the first consideration in conjunction with regular class placement. So what is resource, the way I know resource, and my son with autism benefited from that type of supplementary service even in the general ed setting, it was called inclusive resource, is to support that student in IEP goals and access to the general curriculum with a little bit of extra specialized instruction from a special education teacher. Unfortunately, I feel like RTI squared now stands for resource turned into interventions. It's a general education tiered intervention system. And back in two thousand and fifteen, you heard the Andersons speak at a hearing, and one member said, "I think there's more to this than that," because they were saying they didn't mind pullout, it just needed to be resource and not into a special class with a much lowered level of skill base. And I've spent the last few years untangling this to try to explain this to you all. And this is nothing against small instructional groups or RTI interventions. When one of my sons, who's now at West in the IB program, was in kindergarten, he's a May birthday, very young. He's the only kid in our family who didn't know his letters. He did that little kindergarten intervention when kindergarten ended at one o'clock. He went from the lowest level to the highest level. Great. Similarly, fourth grader, the twin of my son with autism in fourth grade, from fourth grade to fifth grade, forgot how to do long division. He bombed the test into the placement for those math classes, and they put him in the lowest class, and then they realized, "Ooh, maybe he shouldn't be there." He chose to stay in there. He said, "No, I'd like to stay in this class because everything's explained so well, and I really get it." So I've seen absolutely the benefits of those, but those are for students without disabilities. The same prefab intervention that's designed for students without disabilities does not work as far as I can see. And all the IEP meetings that I go to, it's the number one issue is what happened to resource? And how did my kid get put into that class where he's now going to Walmart? And remember Albert, who came up and spoke? Well, that was the situation there. Because there's no delineation now in the IEP meetings, the mother couldn't understand why her son just kept going down and down into a CDCA class. And that is the symptom of trying to superimpose the language of a tiered intervention system for regular education onto students with especially pervasive disabilities. The minute a student is eligible for an IEP, least restrictive environment kicks in, and you cannot say this is what they're getting in this setting. You have to be able to port it in. You can port Wilson reading into regular education environments, and Knox County simply won't do it. Whenever I say, "Please tell me what supplementary supports you provide such as resource room or itinerant instruction in conjunction with the regular class placement," I'm told, "We appreciate your interpretation of the law." And I say, "I'm just reading the law. I'm just asking what that is." So in conclusion, I filed an administrative complaint against the state and Knox County Schools, which I sent to you. I hope you got that. And we'll find out in sixty days how the state determines for or against the violations. And this is at no cost to anybody, just the cost of my time, and I hope it will avoid more costly measures that would have to come after that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum.
Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the legislative priorities, you know, we all face this from time to time when we sit here. I remember the year Doug Harris had to vote to support the legislative priorities because he agreed with all but one of them. He was not opposed to school vouchers, the rest of us were, but in the spirit of cooperation voted for it. I have said this at our legislative luncheon, this board is not going to be surprised by this, but I struggle with the last one about assessment. I worry that every time this board talks to the state, we are saying we are against an assessment. I understand that we don't particularly like this assessment. It may be too long, Ms. Bounds and I have talked about that. But I am fearful in that when we don't have reading proficiency at third grade, at some point, we need some kind of second grade assessment. So I would prefer language that encouraged the state to create an assessment that we liked, rather than we're opposed to this because it's developmentally inappropriate. And I also have the same thing. We don't like the kindergarten entry inventory because it takes too long. Well, we have to do something. So I'm just saying publicly, I have a real problem with that, that every time we talk about assessments to our legislators, we are talking against whatever kind of assessment is coming. And I wish our language could be more proactive, seen as less negative, because some of the conversation that we've had here tonight really acts like we're pitted against our local state representatives. I am not. I agree with them on a lot of things, I disagree with them on some things, just like I do my colleagues on the board. And so I really hope that we don't continue, that that relationship can improve. So I just, for the record, had to say that. The rest of it, I sort of agree, but I do have one other question about the teacher performance evaluation to be used in advisory capacity and not as the sole determinative factor in forming human capital decisions. It's not ever been the sole determining factor, to my knowledge, and so I respectfully request that that be taken out because I think that is factually incorrect. And I think that will make us not look good. So I think we can ask them to develop a performance evaluation in conjunction with teachers that they may like better, but to say that last after the comment, until new guidelines are developed, scores should only be used in advisory capacity and not as the sole determinative factor. They're not, to my knowledge, are they, used as the sole determining factor?
Well, I...
Go ahead. I mean, I know after three years of bad scores, you can lose your license, but I've never known of anyone to totally be fired just because of low teacher evaluation scores. So I'm just asking.
I don't know. I would have to research that unless you know off the top of your head, Kelly. I mean, I know what we try to do is provide intensive assistance to teachers to try to make sure that, to get them, provide them the resources, I guess, and support that they need in order to get them to where the score's not going to be such that they would be terminated. But Kelly, I don't know if you've got...
But it's the legislative language that it is the sole determinative factor. It's not the sole determining factor. So that's my question. Can we take that language? I'm fine with supporting them doing a teacher evaluation with teacher input that is better, but I think that line is factually incorrect.
Do you be okay to end it after advisory capacity?
I think that's better, yes. But I'd just say, why don't we end it with adequately represent teacher performance, period, because it's not the sole determinative factor. But I mean, that's just, you know, I'm one vote. I'm just asking the question.
Okay, we'll discuss it and get some other input in there. Mr. McMillan? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McMillan, Ms. Roundtree was next.
I can't, I'm sorry. I just want to comment on Ms. Fugit's suggestion. So I don't, I understand that not as the sole determinative factor in human capital decisions, but I will just add that the way the law is currently written, it is the sole determining factor in tenure. Yeah, so I mean, tenure is, you know, it falls under the umbrella of HR. So maybe if we wanted to amend that somehow and put something in about tenure, I think that would be, I think that would be wise as well. I'm open to, I didn't write this, so I'm open. I guess I shouldn't say I'm open to friendly amendments because I didn't write it, but I'll just say that I am. I will, and I'll just add, as far as the assessment portion, I just wonder if a way to make it, to give options would be to say something like, you know, the Knox County Board of Education supports the use of things that we're already doing. Like we do Ames web testing, and we get reading scores and data and math information from that frequent testing. And so the different assessments that we're already using to gather data on our kids throughout the year versus, I mean, I'm supportive of this language. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, trying to make it positive and show that we are already assessing children in K, you know, K through two, in these different ways. And we do support that, and we would rather see that, things that are more developmentally appropriate, similar to that, supported across the board in both summative and formative assessments. So I don't know what anybody thinks about that, but I don't, and it's not on here, so I know it's part of fully funding BEP, but I do know that when Ms. Bounds went and spoke before the Ed Committee and there were, the School Nursing Association folks were there, and we're talking about supporting specifically a change to the school nurses in BEP. I don't know if we want to add that as a separate line item to also show that we're supporting, I'm getting an amen from this side of the room, so to support that initiative by the School Nursing Association, because I will just say, for the record publicly, one school nurse for three thousand kids and the influx of medical needs that a district our size, I think that, again, speaks to something that, you know, class handles, because with a district our size, we're going to have way greater medical needs than maybe a smaller district that only serves four hundred kids, for an example. So I would love to see that as a, because we put the RTI two positions, put funding of nursing positions, similar language, the Knox County Board of Education urges the General Assembly to amend BEP formula to whatever the School Nursing Association recommended, and I'll look it up really quickly. And, oh, one nurse per seven hundred and fifty, whoa, that's shooting for the sky. I mean, I love them for it, they're, you know, shoot for the moon.
For students who are well.
For students who are well, yeah. So I think that's great, and I agree with that. I don't know that, that's kind of pie in the sky. So I mean, I'm amenable to whatever, but I think, I think anything less than, you know, if we could say...
The legislation is that it's proposed.
That's proposed, is one to seven fifty. So I say, let's go for that. Let's add a line that says, "Funding of nurses," the same language as the RTI two, include funding for school nurses, school nursing positions, one nurse per seven hundred and fifty well students, or whoever wants to look up the...
We could just say the recommended.
The recommendation of the School Nursing Association. Okay.
Okay.
That's all for me. Sorry, Mike, I took one longer than that.
Okay. We'll get the rest of the discussion, and then we'll come up with an action plan. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a brief comment. I just wanted to say, basically, that in reference to what Ms. Fugit was saying, I concur with about everything that she said, particularly in regard to the assessments. But also, I have a little bit of a problem with the school grading situation. And I mentioned this at the legislative meeting. I don't care where you do a percentage or how you do it, it doesn't necessarily have to be a letter grade, but I think the parents and the taxpayers and the teachers, too, deserve a right to, you know, know what grades, score, whatever you want to call it, once you look at the, at the school as a whole, you have to come up with some criteria to place an evaluation on. So I'm not going to support this. I'm probably the only one that won't, but that's just, that's just where we are. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Ms. Dethridge. Oh, Ms. Owen was before you. Okay, Ms. Owen.
Thinking about human capital decisions, there are a lot of things besides just simple hiring and firing that are encompassed in human capital decisions. And historically, we have absolutely made human capital decisions based solely on that score. There have been positions that have been listed as only open to teachers with fours and fives. That's a human capital decision, that you may only apply for that position, you may only be considered for that position based on that score. Two years ago, we had teachers non-renewed based solely on their scores. Three years ago, we had teachers non-renewed based solely on their scores. So to say that we have not had human capital, human capital decisions based solely on scores, we cannot say that, because that happens often, and state law allows that to happen often. So I think to say that whether we are using those scores solely to have people advance or not advance, or to consider for a position or not, or to hire or fire, any of those things are inappropriate uses of those scores. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Who is next? Ms. Dethridge, and then Mr. Norman?
Thank you. After our discussion, I think you kind of hit on what I was getting at saying, Ms. Bounes, and that was, I think we need to look at this and make some changes to some further discussion that I've heard. And because I agree, I hear what you're saying, and that is that it may be used for that, but I don't know, it just sounds like that is the only thing that that is used for. And I think it's, even though that that may be a part of what has happened with it, but that's not the only sole thing that it's used for. So I think we just need to look at it, maybe reduce, reword some of this. I think, I see Ms. Roundtree already over there working on some things, so I don't know if we just need to take a look at this. This is a draft, so can we just take another look at this and bring it back? Is it certain reason why we have to devote on it tonight? It is?
We'll have to watch it back in session.
See, if we'd met Monday, we could have talked about it and redone this to vote tonight, but now I think that may be...
We need to go ahead and make a decision.
Well, it'll be a month out and before.
Okay. Okay, well, then that was mine. That was my question.
Okay. And Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is to that issue, teacher performance evaluation. Ms. Owen said it very well. It's obviously, these evaluation scores are obviously used quite frequently, and they've been used in a summative way. One of these days, the absurdity, the absolute absurdity of what we do in evaluation with this team model, and we're starting to realize that because we're shifting from it in a bunch of schools, this will go away, and we'll look back at it, and we'll go, no, we didn't do that, did we? But, yeah, we did, and we put it on a bunch of teachers and hurt a bunch of professional careers by doing this. I wrote this thing with the help of the Law Director and spent several hours on it, and we've spent several hours talking about it. So I'm not for changing a word of it, because it sends a strong message to our legislators the way we feel about evaluation systems.
Okay. Back to Ms. Fugit.
Just going to say, thank you for answering my question. I mean, all I did was ask a question, and now I decide how I'm going to vote. I asked a question about the teacher evaluation, I got my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does anybody else have just, so wait, we're going to vote on this tonight, right? I don't want to go through this whole, like, okay, well, I have a change. I want to make a friendly amendment, make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to make a motion to add the following language after, oh, sorry, I clicked off of that. So after the line that says, funding of RTI two positions, I want to add another line item that reads, funding of school nurse positions, and it would read, "The Knox County Board of Education urges the General Assembly to amend the BEP formula for school nurses to one nurse per 750 students based upon the recommendation of the BEP Review Committee, which also echoes the recommendations of the National Association of School Nurses, the American Association of Pediatrics, and the CDC." Centers for Disease Control.
Okay. The Law Department asked that you clarify, because we have a motion already on this floor, whether this is a substitute motion or an amendment.
What should it be, Gary? Substitute motion. Substitute motion. Everything that's in there and add this. Substitute motion. Wait, did I get a second? No, we're still on that.
We're still.
Okay. Do I need to reread that? Gary, I'll defer to you.
Well, Ms. Roundtree, you made the original motion. It was seconded by Mr. Norman. So if you want to substitute, you would need to specify a substitute, and then Mr. Norman would need to second that. If you want an amendment, that's treated a little bit differently.
Okay. I want to substitute this. I want a substitute motion. Yes, yes.
Mr. Norman seconds it.
Do I need to read it again for anybody?
I don't think so. So now we can vote on it, is that correct? Is there any other, just, no, okay.
Oh, I'm done. Wait, Terry's lights on.
Ms. Hill?
I don't, I don't disagree with what we're asking for at all on this. I fully support what's being said. My concern lies in that if we start singling out support services like this, that we're looking at, I mean, the nurses aren't the only ones that are in there fighting for more. Counselors are, their professional organization recommends more than the BEP. Social workers are, their professional organization, you know, I'm just concerned that if we start cherry picking, that it may not be the wisest, wisest way to go, because there are so many, there are so many other areas of disciplines.
I hear what you're saying. I think where we were coming from was the fact that these two initiatives were already before, so it's just lending our support to our legislators that, yes, we do support their initiatives. And counselors hasn't been addressed, I don't think, yet by this legislative. Well, in years past, but not. This one is, yeah, so, okay. Mr. McMillan?
Just a point of order, since this is a substitute, this will be the only vote taken, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Ms. Bounes. I just, I totally, I get your point, Terry. I mean, I would add, of course, it goes up to me, a laundry list of other support services, librarians, no surprise there. I think it was, at least in my mind, a way to do what Tony had talked about, maybe, and Lynn had talked about, as far as being positive. Like, we know that legislation is in place. We're trying to say that we support this idea of the legislation and, you know, maybe get everybody on one big team. You know, it's, yeah. I guess we hit unsubstituted if everybody felt that. I don't know about how to do that.
We have a substitute motion on the floor to add the language for the school nurses. So if there's no other discussion, we'll take a vote, and on this up.
Should we, in the substitute motion, maybe this would ease some of your concerns, Terry, to, the GA, to support the current legislation that amends the BEP? If I put, if we put in that line, instead of just amending the BEP, but saying supports the current legislation to amend the BEP, because as far as I know, like, I know the School Nursing Association has already talked to the Ed Committee, the legislation has already been, I don't know if that matters, but...
It doesn't matter to you? Okay. Ms. Owen?
Call for the question, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. McMillan has asked...
Never mind.
We call for the question, so all in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
No.
Okay. Terry, did you get that? How many votes there were? Do we need to do a roll call?
What, a roll call?
We can do a roll call. Okay. We'll start over here with, where, Ms. Dethridge?
And a yes is in support, as Ms. Roundtree's substitute motion stated. Ms. Dethridge?
Her substitute motion is all are voting on and not the...
It is the whole motion.
It's the whole thing?
The whole thing. That's to take motion.
Okay.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Ms. Fugit?
No.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Bounes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
That is five yes votes, three no votes, and one pass. Ms. Hill, do you wish to...
Okay, so the motion carries. All right, we are, oh, one more, yes, public forum.
Public forum. We have one speaker signed up for a public forum, Madam Chair. Candace Banister.
Candace Banister, Knox County resident. Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board members. Recently, I heard that you all were concerned that I might make Knox County schools look bad. I can assure you, that is not my motivation in coming to speak. I am coming to share with you concerns I have, which played a role in my son's suicide. I am reporting to you policies, actions, and lack of action which need to be addressed. I am not coming to you to seek sympathy. I have an army of friends and family who are sympathetic to our loss and the pain it has caused our family. I am coming to you to see change, as you are the governing body of Knox County schools. So far, Knox County Schools has changed the suicide prevention training for teachers, and the narrative at FHS has changed a little bit on parent night, but that is not the end of the change I seek. Guidance counselors should be utilized as more than testing facilitators and college entrance mentors. Guidance counselors should be available to see our students who need guidance. Every child who is suspended for more than four days should have to meet with a guidance counselor when they return to school. Depending on the severity of their suspension, they may need to be seen more than once, until it is deemed that the student has acclimated and is doing well. There needs to be a checks and balance within our system when individual schools make decisions about long-term suspensions. It should never take from December the 8th until February 10th to get a fair decision, and that length of time damage can be done that cannot be undone. Night school is a bit of a problem. There's a good reason school takes place at the same time as the traditional workday for parents. High school students who are in trouble certainly do not need that kind of time on their hands, unsupervised. It is a computer-based program which could easily take place at their home school in the ISS classroom. Student safety should be a priority. If a group of teachers raises questions about the practices of their administrator, please listen to them. If an administrator is not cutting it, then offer a mentor to work alongside, demote them to an AP position, but please, just stop moving them around and hoping it will work out better. Implement random drug testing for all students participating in extracurricular activities at the high school level. Alcoa City and Maryville City Schools both do it, and it has not hurt their athletic programs, nor has it hurt them academically. Stop hiding a drug problem that you know exists. Do something about it. It bothers me greatly that you seem a bit more concerned about the image of Knox County schools than the fact that three of your students committed suicide last spring. What changes have you enacted? What questions have you asked? How many times have you visited your schools? Friday is Will's 17th birthday. Will came along when our older son was nine and a half years old and completed our family in the most perfect way. The first thing I knew about Will was that he had red hair, and it was glorious red hair, the kind that could be seen all the way across the room. Will ran cross-country in distance track at Farragut. Friends often told me they saw the team practicing on Campbell Station, but they could pick Will out, because his hair stood out. Will was an honors student who had completed three honors math and three honors science classes as a sophomore. When he died, he had a GPA of 3.7 at Farragut. Will was not a troublemaker. He made a stupid mistake at 15 years old. I know adults who still make stupid decisions. Will loved fashion, bought his own clothes, and carefully picked out his outfits for school. He kept an impeccable closet, and all of his shoes still looked like new. He was funny, had a great sense of humor, was a good listener, and encouraged his friends. He was empathetic and sensitive to the needs of others. Will had chosen to be an organ donor. In death, he provided life to many, including a 16-year-old boy who received his heart. He was just months away from earning his Eagle rank in Scouts. He loved chocolate Lucky Charms, fruit gushers, Mountain Dew, Pasta Alfredo, and fresh fruit. He loved camping, hiking, and traveling, his favorite, Venice, Italy. He loved making cookies at Christmas and drinking my tea while I cleaned up the kitchen after dinner. He made putting away laundry a comedic routine. He loved for me to dry his hair after his shower at night and would just about fall asleep while I did it. He loved his friends above all, and he loved his job at NUCS. He was six feet tall, 148 pounds, and his favorite color was ice pink. He was our spice, our paprika. Will was unique, no one can take his place. I was given a card when Will passed away that sums it up well. He lived, and laughed, and loved, and left, and the world will never be the same. Thank you.
That concludes public forum, Madam Chair.
Okay. We are going to have board forum tonight, and I'd like to start with a thank you note from Jim French, and he wanted me to share with this with the board, and I felt like I could just do it orally, and that would be the best way, so I'll just read it. "I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to work for Knox County Schools. It's been an incredible 16 years, and I am so grateful for the opportunity and support that the board and the administration gave me during my tenure. Working with the fine men and women in maintenance and operations has been a privilege and a pleasure that I will treasure for the rest of my life. I truly believe that Knox County Schools has the best maintenance and operations department in the state. I hope the new director can have greater achievement than I have had with kind regard, Jim French." So I wanted to share that card that he sent to you all as a board. So, anyway, that being said, Mr. McMillan, do you have anything for board forum? Ms. Hill? Ms. Horn does.
Thank you. Just thank you again to the folks that came out last night, to our strategic plan session in the 5th District, and I'm just encourage feedback at the website. I think it's, I'll try to remember this. It's knoxcounty.org/strategicplan. Is that right, Carly?
Knox Schools.
I'm sorry, I don't even know what I said. So if you would just give us your feedback, and we look forward to reading all those. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. On the strategic plan thing, I also encourage people, you don't have to go to the meeting in your district. There are eight more meetings. The first one's tomorrow night. You can do online, you can attend any public meeting, so just encourage people to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roundtree? Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one thing from the last board meeting. I asked about cultural competency, the item that was on the agenda. Ms. Cote, you was good enough to get me the materials, the curriculum guide for this program that we're about to employ next year. And I thought it would be a good idea for the board to also have copies of it. And so I'm going to request that we get each member of the board a copy, so that we might discuss this a bit at the next workshop. Thank you.
Ms. Owen? Dethridge?
I just wanted to update the board on the, on the progress of my student board of high schoolers. I am working with them to put together a calendar for the rest of the year, and we're going to have meetings, and so I will let you all know whenever I have that solidified, so you all can be updated on what our students are thinking and, from all different schools. So thank you guys for your support again, and I'll keep you guys updated.
Okay, thank you. Okay, without anything else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Okay. Motion, lots of seconds, meetings adjourned. Motion, lots of seconds, meetings adjourned.